All right, it's seven o'clock. Welcome to the Thursday, October 16th, 2025 Pembroke Select Board Meeting. Please join us in reciting the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please note that this meeting is being made available to the public through a live video and audio broadcast on Comcast Government Access Channel 9 and YouTube channel at Pembroke Meetings LS and is being recorded for broadcast at future dates. Comments made in open session will be recorded. Hi, and welcome. Do we have any announcements to start off our meeting? Nothing?
Any hydrant flushing?
Any hydrant flushing, as I always said? Do you want to do that now?
You want to do it now, or you want to wait?
It's up to you.
So there, right now, there is no hydrant flushing, but we've got so much water work going on.
Oh, I've seen, yes.
That, I know I'll have some updates during the town manager report also, but it's just, you know, we're seeing some, some water issues related to that, but nothing major.
Okay.
And it's clearing very quickly, I mean, so that's a good thing.
I'll say questions for town manager's report, then. Did you have any update on the veterans' parade ceremonies?
I don't, I missed the meeting last night. Pardon me?
They'll be coming to your next meeting.
Perfect.
Right.
Yes.
But they did speak about it at the breakfast, and things are moving along, but nothing really finalized going through the process.
Well, I was just wondering if you found a home base for step off yet?
Yeah, I was not at the meeting on Tuesday, but I will get you that information.
I was just curious. All right, well, we have a scheduled appointment at seven o'clock with our town moderator and town clerk. Fall special town meeting preview. Hello?
Good evening, members of the board.
Nice to be here again. I was just thinking, I think this is, we did not have a special last year, right?
We did not.
And I think two years, so two of the last four years, we haven't had Fall Specials, so. Anyway, but I just want to remind folks that we are on, the town meeting will be at seven o'clock next Tuesday, this coming Tuesday, which is the 21st, at seven o'clock at the high school. Thanks to the great work the town clerk does with her staff, check-in has like been incredibly quick. And so we, we've been starting close to seven o'clock, which is great, because we have a fair amount of business to do. So I just urge people to get there early, and so we can get the meeting started as soon as possible. Quorum's 150, we haven't had a problem meeting that the last number, well, in a long time. And that's because people are attentive, and they come early, and that's great, so I just want to keep that up. And early we start, there earlier we'll be finished. So the purpose of this meeting, for those watching at home, is really just to kind of do a run-of-show, just to go over the procedure of who's going to make what motion, so we're all on the same page. It's not to debate the articles, but I think it is important for us to meet prior to the meeting, just to make sure we're logistically on the same page. And thanks to Sabrina for doing such a great job with the warrant and keeping me informed of what's going on with all the iterations of, of the warrant. One thing, and I always say this, and I think it's worth repeating, is that for people watching at home, I don't want them to think that we are preordaining an outcome. Every single vote, every amendment, every thing we take up at town, any item we take up at town meeting is up to the voters to decide. So this is just a meeting to determine the process, but it's ultimately up to the voters at the meeting to decide. And so I just think that's important for people to know, so they don't think we're somehow rather preordaining the outcome of all these articles. One thing I just wanted to mention, and I was just discussing it with advisory chair Linda, Jim, woman, Linda Peterson. A lot of towns do this, and it's, it's kind of up, I think, to the board, because it's your warrant and it's really your meeting, but a lot of towns do pre-town meetings. This is just to go over procedure, we're not debating, we're not taking questions. I wonder, and we can, we have plenty of time to think about this, whether it's worth doing a week or so prior to the annual town meeting, kind of a pre-meeting, open informal session, I'm happy to moderate it, but I don't have to be the person who does it, just to go over the articles and answer people's questions. I, you've heard me complain about the lack of press in this town, and a lot of other towns as well. And a lot, I'm sorry, but it's been an issue. And I, and I find a lot of people at town meeting just don't know what's going on, and it's because there just isn't a lot of information out there. And so I just want to just stick that on the radar screen, and maybe we can talk about it prior to the annual town meeting next year, is maybe it would help people. And we won't, wouldn't be making decisions, but just give people a chance to ask questions that would maybe save some time at town meeting, not that we would preclude questions at town meeting, but I just thought I'd bring that up.
So other towns do this?
Yeah, number, I, I don't know if any towns around us do, but I know Zach, during the moderators' association, there are many towns, and I say many, there's a good number of towns that actually do, do a pre-town meeting meeting, which is more informal and allows for give and take.
Almost like a forum.
Yeah, forum.
And in the past, we have done that before.
We have, huh?
Yes, we have. Because Steve Curley basically was moderating it as advisory chair and all that.
Yeah, that's true, I forgot about that, you're right.
And we have, we have done that before.
Yeah.
So it's, it's not a new practice. Yeah. It's not a new practice.
You hosted it. You hosted it. Was it successful?
Yeah.
So it was more like a forum at the library, and they would have the official meeting week there?
Usually the week before, yeah. They would do it that week before to let people know what was going on with the warrant, ask any, answer any questions.
I had forgotten about that, that's right. Steve did, yeah, yeah. So maybe advisory wants to, I, I mean, doesn't matter to me, but I just think it would help people become more informed. You, you do a great job with the local scene and.
No, but inevitably, Steve, as a, just an aside, you guys all sit up front, you obviously are master of the stage, you're up on the stage, I get to sit in the audience, and I inevitably sit next to five people who've never been to a town meeting. They're asking every question you can imagine, it's always a good idea to give people more information.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah. So just something to think about.
Definitely revisit.
Yeah.
Maybe also maybe at that meeting, if the town that we do, maybe also just discuss the preliminary procedures at town meeting. I know that can even, like moving the question, I get a lot of people after the, after the town meeting, they'll come out.
They did a legal thing.
So, sorry, after the town meeting, they'll come to our office and they'll say, what, you know, what, what, I thought we were voting for this, but we voted for that, and we voted, so maybe if we had that meeting, that might be really helpful to also say, this is what happens at town meeting, because it is kind of confusing. If you don't watch Gilmore Girls, I think it'd be confusing. So that actually might be, I think that'd be a good idea.
And I don't think it's.
And I'd be happy to assist with, with anything we could do.
Exactly, and no one understands why they get a warrant book, and all the words spoken at town meeting don't look anything like it.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's not a bad idea just to explain that, you know, how that all works.
I, I don't think there's a meeting that, when there's something controversial on, that someone doesn't come up to me and said, this is going to take forever, can we limit debate? Well, you can limit debate, someone can make a motion to limit debate, and to 20 minutes or.
But you're not going to be doing it.
Pardon me?
But you are not.
I can't do it, yeah, I can't limit debate unless someone goes off topic. But, but, and it never happens, and quite frankly, I don't think there's a need to it, because the meeting polices itself for the most part. When people are ready to debate something, someone will get up, who's our pal who always gets up? Bill was, well, anyway, and, and.
No, Bill used to challenge the quorum.
No, no, not that Bill.
It's Jim Kincaid.
Jim, Jim Kincaid, yeah, yeah. And I always know when he's coming up, and.
Can you always remember his name?
I can never remember his name, I'm writing it down, I actually, so, and if the meeting's ready to move on, then they, they police themselves, they vote it, you know? And if they're not, usually it doesn't fail, but, so anyway, but I think that's a good point, people, we can answer procedural questions as well. So speaking of procedure, since we still have an interim town clerk, there is a quirk provision in state law that says interim town clerks cannot be the clerk for a town meeting. So like we did last year, we will have to elect a town clerk just for the meeting. Peg Struzek has once again volunteered to be that person, it's open to anybody who wants to run, but I appreciate Peg volunteering, and she will act as clerk just for that meeting. And for the record, Mary Ann Smith actually volunteered as well, who was the town clerk prior to Peg. So I've asked Peg if she'd do it, you know, accept the nomination again, but it's open to anyone who wants to run, but we have to do that prior to town meeting, for at least this meeting, right?
The next, second one, in that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, anyway, so just going through the articles, I think most of them are fairly routine, although I always say that, and the most article I think is the most routine, ends up being not routine. Oh, the other thing I was going to ask Mr. Town Manager, if you could do a quick public safety update, if you're comfortable doing that?
Sure, absolutely.
We're making progress, and it's great to see, and just a brief one, and I don't think there's any other huge projects that you need to talk about, but I think probably people have the most questions about that. If you don't mind, just a minute or two, that'd be great, that'd be awesome, yeah. First, oh, so I have a question, so we have not set the tax, you have not set the tax rate.
Can't.
Yeah, can't till this is done.
Right.
Okay, so these articles have an impact on the tax rate, or claim?
Claim.
Yeah, okay, just wanted, I thought that was the case.
If you have a special fall town meeting, then you can't set the tax rate till that meeting is concluded, because at, at a special fall town meeting, town meeting can vote any budget changes.
So special and the annual is for that year, this is for the current fiscal year that started, and, okay, I just thought that was the case, trying to remember my advisory committee days. So first meeting, first article is to balance current year's budget, so general operating funds, recommendations for two items, and I'm assuming that'll be moved by advisory. Second article is several capital item funding requests, and that will be moved by advisory. And I'm assuming everybody's in agreement for the most part on most everything.
Yeah, all recommendations are favorable by all boards.
That's great, one of the days when that wasn't the case.
Well, they weren't all unanimous, but they were all favorable action.
And there are only nine of them.
So.
So the article three is to petition the general court to convert the town clerk position from an elected position to an appointed position. That's been submitted by the select board, I don't know who wants to move that.
I think advisory is moving that, I mean, through the select board.
So we have all advisory except for six and eight.
It's a, to move it?
Yes.
Yeah, and I'm assuming you'll, someone on the board will address it. I always say a minute of explanation is worth 10 minutes of questions, so. The second article is to amend the bylaws to remove the consent article from the lottery to the head of the town meeting, which would, so that consent article would come after the budget, the wage and personnel scale and, and the budget, schedule and the budget.
As it is, I don't know that we ever even finish the budget before it's time for us, in an annual town meeting to break for the special, that the idea being consent would follow.
Right.
So that you don't have to worry about exchanging all the balls in the lottery.
Right, because we would, when the first consent article would come out, then we'd take them all, but we have to, I think, take a two, four fifths, because that was our bylaw, to take something out of order, and this just saves a little bit of time. I'm comfortable either way, but, so that would be advisory making the motion. Does someone want to talk to the article at all?
We'll, we'll read the room, Steve.
Yeah, I mean, I do think even if someone does, people don't appear to have questions, it's nice to have just a quick explanation of what it is, just so people understand.
Do you want me to do it?
Sure.
I was going to say, the reason that I say that is it's a trial to do it any other way, and every other town does it this way.
Right, exactly.
Without putting it in Irish language, this town does not like to be a follower.
Right.
Better clean it up considerably.
Yeah, and save some time. And the next article is, again, would save some time, and I, I'm neutral, so I'm happy with it staying, the procedure staying as it is, or the change, but I think it was, let me just put it this way, I'm happy that interim town clerk filed it, I think it'll save a little bit of time.
There's one more to talk about, I mean.
Yeah, so just to explain kind of informally here, for people who are watching at home, there are some, particularly zoning and borrowing, not so much zoning, but borrowing articles that require a two-thirds, and sometimes they're just routine, and so to save having to do a standing counting vote for every one of those, I asked the town permission to give me the power to declare it. I just do a show of hands and I declare it, and if it's at all close, you know, we do a standing vote, and that's in the motion. But the point is, we have to offer the motion and vote on it to give me that power, the moderator that power, at every meeting. This just makes it automatic, and again, I think it's what most towns do.
Oh, and by the way, for the preview show, you should throw in there all the little things that have to happen before you can even get started on town meeting.
That's right, yeah, and there was a lot of work that goes into it. So advisory's going to make that motion, I don't know, do you want to address it, or? Yeah, no, I don't see a problem with that, just explaining briefly what it does, yeah. So article six is to join the South Shore Evoque, who is going to move.
School committee, I believe.
School committee.
I'm not sure if it's school committee or you, I don't know.
I, I called the office, and somebody said the only one that advisory wasn't, it was the CPC, because Lisa would do it.
No, 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 you called our office.
That's right.
No, I'm not school committee, we should probably check with them.
Okay.
They might want it. You know, I don't know.
And I imagine the school committee's going to address it.
Yes, Bill will address it, they have legions.
I have a question about that, actually, so we have superintendent wants to speak on this, and so.
Yeah, she's allowed.
Okay, but does anything have to happen?
No.
Oh, yeah. Since they're not, they're not Pembroke residents.
No, no, but if you start at the meeting, you remember all the little motions that we make? One of them is usually to allow specific individuals to address town meeting or not residents for the purposes of answering questions, and Heron Ovi would be one of them.
Well, we don't take that vote at every town meeting, it's kind of just standing procedure. If someone who wants someone out of town to address an article, we kind of do that on a one-off basis, and we'll ask the meeting for permission, like a consultant or an engineer.
But the idea is we'll talk slowly, not talk slowly, not very.
Right, and so it's.
I'm not saying we're.
No, no, I just mean, it's, it's not, it's very the same, it's, there are the equal and opposite people on the opposite side of us, and I know we should speak.
But what about Tom Hickey, he's also expected to.
And who Tom is.
So Tom Hickey's the superintendent of South Shore Evoque.
So I think for him, I, I think our general, I don't even think this is in the bylaw, but a lot of what we do is governed by kind of precedent history. We've always allowed town officials, like Mike Buckley, I don't know if he lives in town now, but at some point, and we used to speak a lot. So I have no problem with a town appointed or elected, well, elected, they'd be in town, but an appointed official, you know, speaking without taking a vote, but I think.
He falls in your consultant category, right?
Yeah, for superintendent from another town, I think I get to ask the town permission, they always do it, but I think we need to ask that, so we should coordinate, I need his name and his title.
Yeah, I can get you that information, yeah, and contacts.
Thomas Hickey.
Yep.
So this is a pre-meeting, can we just clarify something, and maybe Bill's the best person for this? The wording of this article, some people might get the impression that this town meeting might be binding us to a prop two and a half override, when in actuality, we need another vote next spring town meeting, and then it'll, an election vote. So I understand that, but if, Bill, if you could just speak to that for, for this pre-meeting.
Yeah, so the, this, this vote is based on a motion written by town council, is exclusively to allow us to negotiate to join South Shore Evoque Tech. The reason that other language is there is because joining South Shore Evoque Tech needs to be contingent upon the passage of a prop two and a half override and a debt exclusion override. This does nothing with either of those, other than make this vote contingent upon a path, the passage of those two at a future town meeting and election.
Okay, so.
But what it's worth, it specifies the 2026 annual town election.
Correct.
So it sets expectations for it being May.
Next May.
Right?
Yeah, and to paraphrase Steve, a couple of words today might save some discussion.
I was going to ask the same thing, just to, so I was clear on it.
Any, any votes for funding will occur in the spring of 2026 at our annual town meeting. Any votes for proposition two and a half or a debt exclusion override will occur at the spring town meeting, and then the annual election following Saturday.
Right, but we don't have to take, the town does not have to take another vote to join.
No.
No.
So it's, this is the vote to join, and then the funding comes after.
Correct.
Okay, yeah, yeah, if that doesn't come up, I'm going to ask you to explain it, because that's, I think people need to know that as well, yeah, so, okay. The next one is a kennel zoning change, I don't know if someone would explain it in 10 words or less, but I know I cringe every time dogs.
This one's easy.
Comes up at a town meeting, because.
Forgive me, Linda, Andy Wondell wants to make that motion, he does, that just.
Okay, there was going to be a question.
He's upstairs right now, if you need him. Back to the planning board chairman, and then he can speak to it, if that's okay with you, Mr. Moderator.
Okay, great. And then the next article is one, two, three, four, community preservation requests, and Lisa Colletti is still chair of the.
She is.
Community Preservation Board, and she can make those motions, and, and then the very last article is to fund collective bargaining agreements, do we have collective bargaining agreements to fund?
We have three.
Okay, great, and that'll be both our advisory.
And, and Bill, just to, we spoke about this before, those collective bargaining agreements will be available to the public?
Yes.
And.
Well, the MOAs, that.
The MOAs would be available to the public, will they be online and perhaps in the packet?
To be fair, we've never done that.
Never done what?
In 10 years, we've never done it. We do not distribute the MOA, but if you want it on the website, do you need to talk to the unions about that?
Well, I, I don't want to set a precedent, but if, if someone inquires, and it's a public record.
It's a public record, yes, but again, the law would require we would provide it, and.
Yeah.
We would do it anyways, a courtesy, but if someone asks for something, we must give it.
Well, I, I guess the simple way to put it is, if, if someone is curious about it, and their vote hinges on it, they don't need a FOIA request, they could just call town hall, and then you could disseminate it.
Yeah, come in, yeah.
MOA's available on request.
But to your point, I think it's helpful, I can't compel anyone to do this, to say, okay, these are the three contracts, this is how much, this is what they're getting in raise or not, or whatever, that, you know, just kind of like the details, not minutia, but just kind of the top list of what the contract does and doesn't do.
If I was Joe Citizen, I'd, I'd want the numbers.
Exactly, yeah.
The numbers are easy.
That's all.
These contracts have some confusing language, because they refer to state regulations in a number of areas, specifically the water with the licenses and all of that, that we've had to make some changes, and it refers to that language, so I'm happy to answer any questions related to them. I mean, it's.
I mean, again, my suggestion is we provide that information upfront, just say, this is the amount of the contract, this is the amount of the raise, whatever else is newsworthy in the contract, and that's, that may save some questions, but.
Steve, if I may, so we've only had a few town, a few town contracts that were not negotiated by the select board. Now that this town manager, the town manager negotiates union contracts. So previously, the select board would negotiate the contracts, and we would vote yea and nay in this board to favorable action or not to town meeting, and because we negotiate, because this board as a body negotiated those contracts, we were compelled to advocate for them. And that's no longer, no longer the case, it just so happens we do advocate for these, because we see the terms. But that's just a point of history, that's just a point of history that some people might not understand and know.
Forgot about that, so I guess you're the one to make that, either answer the question, or.
Yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Of all the labor units in the town, no one else will go through that kind of scrutiny, that could be a problem. I'm just saying that for Bill.
This board is prepared to advocate for these contracts, but the, the numbers should be discussed.
I'm so sorry.
Quite frankly, I've been surprised.
And they just, using the MOAs, have never been done, I've never seen a school one, the police and fire have never been distributed, we're going to take the ask-me ones and create.
Well, so let's, so.
That's the crazy part.
I just want to make, make sure that I'm not asking for the moon here, people are just going to want to know what the percentage is.
Sure.
Did the DPW get a 2% raise, or, you know, a 1% or a zero? It's something simple, I mean, start with that, and then if people start to want to get grainier, then, then that's something that could happen on town meeting floor in real time.
Perfect, thank you for saying that.
Yeah, and my only point again is maybe to volunteer that information upfront.
Sure.
Right, that's waiting for questions. I've been kind of surprised in the past, we've done, we do contracts every meeting, almost, and nobody asks a question, and maybe that's, they're satisfied, but.
Well, that's, that's, that's an art form at, at town meeting, you, you, if you already have yes, don't talk. yes, don't talk everybody out of it.
I get that. I get that. You don't want to open up a can of worms, but on the other hand, you want to provide the information as well. So even for people at home that are listening, that, watching, that, you know, you're not be able to make it at a town meeting. Anyway, just a suggestion.
Thank you.
But thank you, Madam Chair, and...
Do you need anything, Steve, before? I'm still making your folder. I don't know that. It'll be ready on Friday.
Just the motions before. Yeah, that's great.
Everything is going to go out Friday at noon.
All right. Once again, seven o'clock Tuesday at the high school and do we have any playoff games that are, I guess not this year?
To be determined.
That's true. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We still have a few minutes before our next appointment, so why don't we move on to a board action item and we have a vote to approve the minutes of September 24th, 2025. I would accept a motion.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Somebody was missing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Town manager's report, do we want to do that now or do you want me to push that off a little?
I can do it. I've got a few items. We'll get there.
We have like five minutes and then we could start.
Yeah, I can probably finish, so. Just, just a quick update. You're going to see a substantial amount of roadwork between now and mid-November. The, the plants all close in November, so all of our contractors are aggressively working to get as much work done between now and then as possible. So as you drive throughout the town, you're going to see work. And I know it's not always convenient for everybody, but the end product is, is awesome for the town. So we're prepping for license renewal. License renewal begins next month, so the staff is getting ahead of schedule and working very hard to do that. I just wanted to put that out there. The assessors are working on the final assessments and the new growth for DOR approval. I believe they already have DOR approval. So that they will be bringing to you for the tax classification hearing at your next meeting on November 5th to vote classification and then the board of assessors will set the tax rate. We are in the beginning, our budget season right now. At your November 5th, I will be doing an overview of that and where we're headed and what the plan is overall as we enter that process. We'll be finalized, we already discussed this, finalizing the FY26 budget at next week's town meeting, so we'll have all the budget and everything in order for any final DOR approvals that we require as a town. We will not, in my tenure, ever set, send, and I'm going to say this because I'll kill myself to get it done, send a third quarter estimated tax, but we will always set our, our tax rate timely so that we never have to do that. It's a financial burden to do that. Your bond rating agencies don't like it when you do that and will criticize you. So we will never do it. We will plan ahead, make sure that we have everything done and it would be catastrophic if we ever did. So we are in good shape for that. Everything has been checked. The boxes are checked. The reports are in. Town meeting will be finished next week. We will have all of our budget information in and the assessors will be here on the 5th. So that's all I have for tonight. I will have obviously some updates on November 5th for the board.
Any updates on the Lagu property?
So we are working with them. We were hoping to make conservation tonight. We did not, so it'll be November.
November, what's going to happen in November?
We will be going to conservation with a plan.
It might be, it might be December because of the way they've realigned their meeting schedule.
Yeah, so it might be December.
But to your point, it might be.
So that we have a plan and there will be a phased plan with that, where the first plan is just to simply put some parking, some signage, and then we'll determine phases after that.
Do we have any sort of a timeframe for that Phase One?
As soon as, as soon as it's approved by conservation, we'll have all the engineering documents and we'll be able to go to bid relatively quickly after that.
It's been going on for so long.
I know, I know. It's painful. So, but we, we are, we are aggressively going after that and I've seen preliminary, finally, I've seen some preliminary stuff so that we're, we will be ready to roll.
Okay. We're going to come back to you after because it's 7:30 if it's okay.
Okay, yeah.
For our next scheduled appointment at 7:30, we have an outdoor live entertainment license application for lightly amplified acoustic music daily DJB Restaurant Incorporated, doing businesses Town Tavern and Treehouse, 24 dash 2242 and 244 Matta Keys at Street. Hi, welcome.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is John Iata, McDermott Cooley, Miller &amp; Haley, located at 28 St. Street in Boston. Here on behalf of DJB Restaurants Inc., doing business as Town Tavern and Treehouse. Joining me is David Barry. Many of you know Dave Barry. He's the owner and manager of this location. Dave purchased this property just briefly by way of background, purchased it in 2022. It is a tremendous job he's, he's done there. You know, great transformation of this property. Not only does he own the real estate, but obviously purchased the business assets as well. Along with that, he acquired the conviction license, the alcohol license and the indoor entertainment license. He presently has outdoor food and beverage service and he would like to add on to that and that's the request this evening for the outdoor live entertainment. This is simply a added, you know, added feature to the ambiance, to the environment out there. It's a wonderful location. His patrons enjoy being outside. I'm sure the majority of them prefer to be outside if they could. So he wants to add this as just a compliment to the, to the dining that is there. Again, what we're seeking is simply one or two performers and/or singers. This is light amplification. This is background music. I just want to make that clear. We're not looking to have a band in there. We're not looking to have percussion or anything loud. And the reason is, why do we need amplification? David's site is almost two acres in size. So where he's looking to place it is kind of between the two buildings, between the treehouse, between the restaurant, and that way the sound will, and he can control that, but will travel to where it needs to. If you're up in the treehouse, it's elevated, it's in the canopy, the trees that kind of mitigate some of that sound, wants it to travel up so that it can be heard. Certainly not to be to the point where you can't have a conversation. He doesn't want that to happen at all. But you know, if you get 20, 30 people talking all at once, you're going to need some type of amplification to get that, that sound there. Again, he's had no issues, no complaints in those three years. He's always receptive. If anyone has any concerns, whether it's the town or whether it's customers, he's always willing to work with them and to resolve this. Where he's looking to put it is at least 200 feet from the property line. He has the benefit of having that entire peninsula and also no direct abutters. So again, we're, we're hoping to add this just as a kind of complimentary feature. The focus has always been on the food and the service and he does a wonderful job. You've seen him maybe on Chronicle recently and some of the other programs. So it is really, you know, a benefit, I think, both as a service to what Dave's done to the property and I think also I would hope that the town has appreciated, you know, what it looks like and, and the atmosphere that he brings about. Again, if you have any questions, we happen to answer. So again, what we're looking for is perhaps a guitarist or a keyboardist and then indoor singer. The system that they're looking for, it's a portable speaker system. It usually goes out about 180 degrees, so we can control that and you can control the volume right there onsite as well if there's any issues or concerns. But he's, he's had other acts, those that have been inside and stuff, and he said this is the way to go and it's not something that is for a large venue. It's just for a small and medium size. And again, where it's outdoors, you need to have certain amplification for it to reach those patrons. So if you have any questions for myself or for, for Dave, we'd be more than happy to answer.
Thank you. Sabrina, did you have something? I thought you had something.
All paperwork is in place.
Yes, ma'am.
So this is for, this is daily for one to nine? Does that sound right?
Yeah, so the, the Monday through Saturday, so I was trying to mimic the indoor and I just asked Dave now, we could probably clarify the opening because we don't need it open, technically open. It could be as early as 8:00 AM. We're certainly not looking for that. But he would like the option, I would say, if there are occasions from, I would say 11:00 AM till 9:00 PM. It does say open till nine, but we can limit that opening hour.
Okay.
And then Sundays would be one to nine.
Okay, I see that Sunday is one to nine.
Yeah.
And the...
And again, that's not, he's not looking to have entertainment, sorry, Sabrina, for the eight hours. It's really just that some acts will come in, maybe it's two to four or 11 to one, something like that. He might have an event or something planned.
Also is, if it's, I'm not sure, I didn't see the, I can't remember everything.
Sure, absolutely.
Sorry. Realistically, I'd say that probably 99.9% of the time it's for Saturdays and Sundays only. The likelihood of Monday through Friday is probably slim to none unless it was some sort of a special event or something that we might put on. But it would be mainly specified for Saturday and Sunday entertainment during the summertime only. Obviously, when we're open outside, we have our indoor license that we'll obviously, you know, continue to do, but this is for the, mainly when the outdoors are open.
Right, right. I was just looking for a start time for the other days of the week, I guess.
Yeah, like ninety, every Saturday and Sunday would be from probably one to four or two to five.
Someone says, yeah, if Sunday's one to nine.
It was Chad out there.
Oh. Is there another question? And so the location we're talking about, you're talking about like...
If you're at the, you know, if you walk in and the hostess stand for the treehouse is directly in front of you, probably about 15 to 20 feet to the right of them in the back.
So over towards like the, where the chairs and stuff are?
In between the chairs, the outdoor patio bar and the chairs.
Okay.
That's where we started. That's where it would be in that perspective.
And are you concerned at all about the sound traveling across the pond?
No, not because of the level. I, I don't think so. I haven't had any complaints in the, you know, and I think that the, the level of what they're playing at, I think that the distance of you and I being here and them playing, you know, 10 feet away from us, I think we can still carry on a conversation.
Right. Lightly amplified.
The difference, there's no difference. The point being simply that this is your four license package. You're dealing with an applicant who's asking for this, who has a Sunday entertainment license that stands alone, free and separately from their regular live entertainment license. So you're in essence amending all live entertainment licenses to include the additional outdoor space with the limits that you decide, the conditions that you decide. But there are, there's a Sunday that's a whole different license.
Right.
And that's why it's capped at one and so forth.
Okay. I just know in the motions, there's no start time for any?
No, it wasn't indicated. So you can fill that in as you go.
I just want to make sure we're being clear.
Yeah, I think it said open too, but I'm realizing open is way too early. So we can agree on a time if that's fine by the board.
I just wanted to make sure we were all clear. That was all. Is my other question? Did anybody have any questions, concerns, comments?
Questions, I would just like to say, first of all, I love your restaurant.
Thank you very much.
It's great. And I don't, you probably have know that we issued our first outdoor license recently. And the problem is we did it before we had guardrails in place and we had no way to enforce it. We are, in the spring, we're hoping to have a bylaw to address all of this, but at the moment, there's no way to regulate it if there's complaints, to say that you're violating something. We don't have those, those guardrails in place in it. That's the only reason I would be hesitant to put this, to say yes to this right now. Hopefully in the spring when we have that, then we can, you know, we have something to point to to say, no, you're violating this, you have to stop.
We, so yeah, we did do sound calculations based off engineering sound calculations of decibel levels at certain distances based off of the equipment that our, that our teams, I've reached out to multiple individuals that we use and their equipment that we used and spoken to sound engineers on them. And we're giving guestimating, pretty, pretty accurate.
Yeah, right, the decibel levels.
Decibel levels at 50 feet, 100 feet, 200 feet. And at this point, from based off the destination where they're singing to our property line, I think it was a little over 200 and somewhat feet. And I think we were close to below 60 decibel levels.
You're right around the medium, medium level volume. Yeah. And that's why, I mean, obviously, we, you guys don't have the benefit of those in place, so we know if you're going to anticipate that. We know about the 65 decibel level or whatever at, at the property line is kind of, could be a parameter. So we are kind of working within that. So we've already kind of got to that point. And then again, that's at a medium setting. I don't even think that probably the largest you'd ever have.
That was a two-person acoustic.
Right. And that's also without, that's just in an open area. It's not with the benefit of the mature plantings and the trees and other people where it deafens some of the sound as well. So we fully anticipate it to not be an issue and, and, you know, obviously if they need to come out and have a compliance in the spring, if and when that passes, more than happy to do that, yeah.
So when, when would this start? When would this take place? I know it's outdoors.
Essentially, it's weather permitting, but I mean, we typically open out there in April if it's good weather. And I mean, we're pretty much wrapped up outside unless, you know, we had a couple of events here and there, but typically wrapped up April to October, April to November 1, something like that.
And I would just say is normally, you know, as council, I'd say we don't want to necessarily set a timeframe because we've had very warm springs and very warm falls that you say, hey, it's a great opportunity, want to do that. So instead of having, making David come back in every single time to expand that, you know, and it's up to the board, obviously, if you want to set a seasonal, you know, period, that's fine. I'd love to know what the seasons are in New England nowadays, but, you know, it changes all the time. So that's why we'd ask for, make it yearly, but obviously it's weather permitting, whether, you know, subject, no one's going to be out there, obviously, if it's inclement weather or cold weather. And that, you know, alleviates the need to come back in front of the board, but certainly would be more than happy to entertain whatever the board suggests.
Okay.
And the other, we, to kind of piggyback on that, Bobby, my general manager and I have been kind of talking about some fun things to do in the wintertime. So it'd be cool if we did, if we, if there was something and we had entertainment out there, doing fun things with, you know, ice bars and cocoa bars and fun things for, you know, the Christmas time and whatever else, if we had that opportunity. So again, just to...
Are you going to bring back your igloos?
You know what it is? The igloos? Every time it was windy out there, standing out there trying to hold them in place, she's been bugging me to get them every day. So we might do so.
But because that'd be great to have, you know, whether it's holiday music or something like that, if people want to brave the weather out there.
Just something fun.
Have the ability to have it.
Once a week, maybe once a month, whatever we can do.
Do you guys have a proposed plan in place for, we do receive a complaint?
For a what complaint?
If we do receive a complaint.
I mean, I think, I think...
Volunteer options or...
I think that, I mean, I think you folks know me and my operation there pretty well. And my number one thing is the respect factor of not only the, you know, the people that live in my area, but all the individuals that sit in the seat, the police department, the fire department, if anybody has a concern, it's pretty well done pretty quickly. So whatever, whatever we need to do to make sure that we...
And that was not to indicate that you're going to have a problem.
Yeah, absolutely.
With winter and now you've lost the foliage, maybe the pond is frozen. You're going to change that acoustic layout. You just are.
Yep, absolutely.
So should you err and there's a problem?
Yep, move it around, figure out what we need to do.
Are you prepared to voluntarily step right up to it?
And you'll have people say, well, we hear something. Well, you're going to hear something. Sound travels regardless. The question is, does it, you know, is it the point where it's, you know, problematic? And then regardless, he'll take that into consideration and lower it right away if that's an issue, you know.
Thank you. Here are our third license request for this type of, our permit, I guess. So I guess my only, my only real suggestion is that if this is something we're going to pass, I would like to put some sort of a date for you to come back and do a check-in of some sort that isn't a year out, I guess, just to see how things are going and address any complaints and hear from anybody who might need to be heard from.
Right.
That would just be my...
No, I think that's reasonable and obviously we want to have the ability to actually have some performances there. The question is, we don't know if it'll happen this year or not, but obviously if, if the board was inclined to approve, we'll let you know, you know, hey, we're doing something. There's no issues, no concerns. But I would imagine in the spring, we'll obviously, we'd hit the ground running.
Yeah, if approved, yeah, absolutely.
Go ahead, Dan.
I had a comment that one of the lessons learned from the previous applications is that this board didn't put sufficient conditions on, on a license. And we don't have conditions in our suggested motion before us now.
Right.
So I wouldn't be prepared to just vote on it this evening. We, as you may know, we're, we're in a process to change the bylaw so that it's, it's codified into law and not just a board policy. But I'd be comfortable with a board policy. We just don't have one right now. And I think between now and town meeting, when the bylaw is being looked at, this, this board will develop what we want the bylaw to look at, look like, and perhaps in, in the interim, even, even develop some conditions to protect the town.
Sure.
And of course, you know, we want to be favorable to businesses as well, so that there's a balancing act that we have to, have to make. And we found that without conditions, it's detrimental to the town. And I would be comfortable giving you this, this license with conditions, but we just don't have that before us this evening. And there's possibility that we could get together at a subcommittee and develop... And there's possibility that we could get together at a subcommittee and develop conditions, uh, soon.
Right.
Uh, but just not this evening. So I just want to hear what you have to, your thoughts are on that.
I don't think the board is hamstrung in that sense. I think the board still has police powers, if you will. It's a license, it's not a right. So if there are issues, if there are concerns, we're going to be back in front of you if we haven't resolved them. So the point being is, you know, we still are held accountable. Yes, we'd like to know, like, what we overstepped or what we had an issue with, if that's what we're being brought in front of the board. But, you know, I think to the chair's point, maybe it is a review, like after six months or whatever it is, are there any issues, any concerns, any complaints? We haven't heard any, so we'll extend it out or make it, you know, now an annual and it's just, you know, subject to renewal if there's no issues. And by then, maybe there are conditions. That's really your purview. It's hard for me to say. I mean, obviously, I want the license for Dave and, and the group to have that opportunity to try it out and to see how it goes, especially if there is some more milder, you know, weekends ahead. So that's all I would say, you know? And it, you know, alleviates us having to come back in the spring and we, I don't know, I don't know what your timeline is or when you think that may pass or fine-tuned and everything else in terms of the, the requirements. More than happy to meet those. So once they're in place, it's the license requirements and here's the parameters, whether we have it, you know, if we have it now or have it later, we're still going to have to comply with that.
Sure. And, um, the, the timeline for the conditions that, that I've drafted in my, my head, uh, could happen pretty quickly.
Right.
And without those, I'd be disinclined to, to vote for it this evening. Uh, but I'd, I'd float this out there to, to the applicant and the board that if we, if we tabled this, um, give us two meetings, we have town meeting, so we're going to be busy, but if we tabled it for two, two meetings, you won't have a detrimental vote against you. Not that, and not that you can't come back, but...
Right.
Um, give us a chance to develop some conditions that satisfy me for one, uh, you know, the other board members can speak for themselves. Uh, but I'd, I'd like a chance to have a couple of conditions in place, um, you know, a lot like the planning board does for a site plan. It's, I think it'd be beneficial for, for us and for you. So you know what the parameters are and it's not a guessing game, it's not a personality contest, it's not a he said, she said, it's here are the conditions, you've met them or you haven't. And, um, the reason I can think of doing it quickly is because it's such, such a low amplification of, of that that you're, you're planning, not a live band.
Correct.
So it makes, it makes me feel more comfortable to come up with, uh, just some parameters. And I, I float that out there, I mean, you don't have to agree, you want to advocate for your client, obviously.
Right, right, no, we understand. But, you know, um, you know, to that end, I think, again, whatever is provided, it's the license, right? So if the board says, if you want this license here, the parameters, whether they're approved tonight or, or later, they're still going to, that's my point, is that they're going to have to be complied with, right? It's not like we come in front, of course, we're going to say, yeah, we're going to comply, but we don't even have the license yet to even attempt to comply with them. So regardless, we, you know, you're saying like, these are things you have to meet. If they're in place, we would say, yes, we agree. And then we're not airing unless we go beyond that. That's right. So again, it's, it's your purview. Um, we're not opposed to waiting necessarily, but at the same time, we're here, we're trying to present this. We'd like to have the opportunity to prove that we can operate this license, you know, responsibly.
Sure. So Tracy, everything I've said tonight is just for you, you folks to consider.
I think what Dan's saying is, we'd like to have a little bit of time to think about what kind of conditions we actually want to put on there instead of maybe impulsively doing it tonight.
Okay.
And then sending you off with them.
Sure.
Today. John, did you have anything before?
Yeah, like I said, Dave and I, we've talked about this and everyone understood and everyone saw. A lot of people in Pembroke here have basically what I said during the complaint meeting, that basically because of, we can't have nice things anymore. Uh, until we get those parameters, I would have to say no anyway. And by Dan's suggestion of giving us a couple, a couple weeks, a couple meetings to actually look at certain parameters before we get the bylaw changed, I'm willing to look into that to basically change my mind. I know your property very well and especially when you had the, uh, outdoors, uh, small shop day, that was wonderful and it was low-key and everyone was busting their butt going back and forth, it was wonderful. Uh, so having amplification, which, what the amplifier is like a pocky puck pretty much?
Well, it's a small, it could be smaller.
It's portable.
Okay. Well, the one I saw was, you know, I was like, that's pretty impressive and technology is a hell of a thing. Uh, but yeah, I'd have to basically, I'll go with Dan on that and kind of wait a little bit to make sure that we...
Sure.
You'll be our test subject on basically the parameters, basically just for this board until we go to town meeting, which in the spring, to actually change that bylaw for us.
Yeah, and to, um, you know, to your point, if you don't have those to articulate for us to accept, then, then we, how can we agree to it? That's all I'm trying to say, right?
Exactly.
So I, I, we understand that.
And I don't think it's necessarily that you need to wait till we have a bylaw in place all the way through.
Well, that's what I was trying to get at. Like if you had a list and we could go back and forth, but...
Right, I think it's having a list of conditions that we want to place on this is the same as having to have the bylaw in place.
Right, right.
And that could be done much sooner where we could at least start moving more comfortably with this request.
Sure.
So then, do, do we want to skip making any sort of motion so that I don't want to table it? I don't want to deny...
So if I could, if I could put it out there just as, for consideration and not a motion.
Right.
Um, we have a meeting on November fifth.
That's what I was going to say.
Your fifth is very ugly.
So, but...
Okay. Could you start with your six thirty?
I understand, I, I understand.
No.
Um, but November fifth gets us through town meeting, we're going to be very busy. Uh, but I think it's incumbent upon this board to do our homework.
Sure.
And also, that's early enough that should we agree to give you the license, it puts you in a position for, you know, the Thanksgiving and the rest of the holidays coming up. And I, I, I think that, my point of view is that that's a reasonable amount of time for, for you folks to wait. And it's also puts us under the gun, uh, to get on our horse and start really coming up with some conditions, because you might not be the only one coming to us this year. So we should have a, a fistful of conditions in place prior to a full bylaw. That's even if the bylaw goes through.
Right.
It's town meeting. So we should have a policy in place.
Sure.
Knowing the history that we've had for, uh, pre, uh, we've had successes and we've had, um, not failures, but, um, some errors made. And, and I think we can, we can come up with, uh, conditions that satisfy me and hopefully the rest of the board in that timeframe.
Sure. Yeah, we certainly don't want to back you to a corner, that's not what our intention is. You guys need to feel comfortable, we need to feel comfortable with it, I think it just makes sense, so.
So then how do we feel about tabling this until November fifth?
I'll make the motion to table this until November fifth.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, appreciate your time, man.
Thank you for coming out.
All right, thank you.
We'll see you then.
Thank you.
That's a good suggestion.
Yeah, that is a good suggestion.
All right. Um, we are going to return to the town management report. I don't know if you had anything else you had planned on sharing, but I just had a couple of questions.
Okay.
Um, we talked about utilities, you were going to share something about a utility, I thought you said you were going to have it for tonight, um, something to do with National Grid.
So the discussion was, there was a question that came up about, uh, new growth.
Yep.
And taxation. And, um, we had a pleasant surprise in that, uh, the utility company new growth is substantially higher than, than what was estimated. In fact, uh, utility company new growth for taxation in the average in the last five years was seventy thousand. And this year it is, uh, three hundred and sixty-nine thousand, which has given us the ability to actually fund those things at, under Article One at town meeting.
So why did that happen?
It happened because Eversource, Massachusetts Electric, which is National Grid and NSTAR, all did a substantial amount of new work within the town of Pembroke that adds to their taxable value, so it's new growth for personal property.
All just this past year?
Yep. It would be, it would be completed this past, within the past year, yes. So if you think about all the, the gas mains that, that were put in, um, all that work that you see, that you're driving over, that's new growth, it's all new gas mains. Um, you see all this, the work that, uh, National Grid did on their substations and some of the other things to improve the power in the town of Pembroke, that's new growth. Um, it's all a good thing, it's a good thing that our, our utility companies are investing in the town, uh, to make improvements and it's a good thing that we are, uh, having the ability to, um, collect the taxes for those, those utilities. And it has allowed us to do some things that we would otherwise not have been able to do without spending one-time funds on, which I would be very reluctant to do.
That's a huge jump.
And it's, don't expect it every single year, that tax will stay as part of the proposition two and a half tax base, but unless they do the same amount of new growth next year, it's going to fall back and the assessors cautioning everyone that, you know, expect it to fall back to that, that average that we've seen over, that over time. But, um, I, I would, I would anticipate that the utility companies will continue to do some, so we may see small margins in addition to that average, uh, over time, but...
What was that average, seventy?
Seventy, seventy thousand, seventy thousand one hundred and seven dollars is the exact five-year average prior to this year, so.
Thank you. Um, what's going on in the sidewalks on Center Street?
They're, they're doing the, the, the water work.
That's all that?
Yes, it's all part of that.
Italians, yeah.
Yeah, it's Italians. They just happen to be there, so we get, fortunately get the sidewalks improved as a, as a, as a side note.
Do we have any updates on the public safety buildings?
I can, sure, I'm happy to share. Uh, they are moving forward. Um, both groups, um, uh, have finished a lot of the site work and the clearing. Um, they have met the requirements for that, both groups have pulled building permits for the building, both groups are starting. Uh, the substation, uh, at Monroe and School, um, actually has rebar and concrete in place already. Uh, they will be starting, uh, at the, the public safety headquarters, um, with rebar and concrete this week. Um, they are anticipating at the substation that they will be enclosed in time, so there'll be no winter conditions there, which is a good thing. Um, the, the main station, it's just too large, there will be winter conditions, uh, that was always planned. Um, you know, you always hope for a nice warm weather and a nice warm winter, so it's a little bit easier and things move forward. Um, all of the testing has been awesome, um, as you may or may not know, I don't know what people's experiences with buildings are, but you do testing, you have testing company come in and, and test everything. Everything has been great, the compaction levels are awesome, um, the, the soils that we're using for, for backfilling and compaction have tested really well. Uh, we had the one issue at the substation, which I believe I discussed, where they found a small section of asbestos pipe. That's been, uh, that was just a loose piece of pipe, um, that ended up there over the years, that's been, uh, gone and signed off on. There was some, uh, excess, uh, material at the, the, the main station that they have tested, uh, because we require testing if we're going to take anything off-site that can't be used, it's, it's not suitable for backfill at that site. That's tested, no problems with that. And, and the company actually without, uh, there was a change order to do it, but it was a zero-cost change order to the town. So I am very pleased so far, everything is going smooth, we've had no major glitches. Um, and if we had, you would hear about it, because if we have a glitch, I'm going to make sure you're in a loop on that. Uh, but things are moving and on schedule at this point.
Bill, so when you say no winter conditions, uh, you're referring to underground soils conditions, right?
Yeah.
You don't need to count on that?
Correct. Yep.
How about Swanburg?
Swanburg, Swanburg well is moving forward. Um, I met with them. We had a bit of a glitch at Swanburg, but it, it turned out to not be a major glitch. DP came in and that they, when they were drilling, they found, um, some tires.
Tires?
Tires, you know? And because it was a previous cranberry bog, the, the thought, thought process was such that, um, that whoever the cranberry company was just threw some tires in and they found it.
Right.
What we did, and DP is happy, our consultants are happy, and as a result, I'm happy, and obviously Dan Sullivan, we dug around, we dug out a main area around just to make sure it wasn't, uh, a, a major, and, and we've, what we found was nothing. Uh, there's, there's no hazards, everything's tested fine. Um, and so we did stop the drilling of, of that well at that time. We're back on target, um, as of the meeting Tuesday? Yesterday, yesterday. Uh, we're back on target, uh, and the drilling has started and DP is happy. So like I said, if DP's happy and the consultants are happy, then I'm happy. So moving forward with Swanburg.
Awesome. All right, one last thing. Golf course and the funeral home, do we have any updates there?
So golf course and the funeral home, um, they are moving forward, funeral home first, they've, uh, already pulled some preliminary permits. Golf course is, uh, they're waiting a, a little bit, but not long, they're, they're ready to start all of that work. So, and I'm, I'm actually going to be, well, we'll be talking about some of that, um, in the executive session tonight, so.
We haven't heard any like start date for anything at the funeral home?
Uh, I have not. I have not, but I know they've been there doing some boring and some work, so it's getting closer.
Okay. All right.
And I can follow up to, for the fifth, I'll have some, I'll ask them for specific start dates, so.
It'd be nice to see something get moving over there. Um, that was everything. Anybody else have any questions? Okay. Do we have any old business tonight? Do we have any new business tonight?
I do.
Go ahead.
Uh, relates to that, uh, previous discussion. Um, so I would, I would suggest that, um, individual board members, uh, write their own conditions, recommendations. Uh, there's two ways to do this, here's one way. Individual board members write a list of, uh, conditions, submit them to the town manager who coalesce them and then disperse them to, to the board members. That way we're not deliberating outside of a meeting. Or we could have a subcommittee of two, uh, to do it. But I, I think this is simple enough and we're going to have so many overlapping conditions that it just makes sense for us to, to give a, you know, half a dozen, uh, your choice, but say half a dozen each, send it to the town manager's office and then he can blast out to the board. And then we'll have, um, all the recommendation, all the, all the conditions, uh, in our pocket and we can use them all or use them like a menu, uh, the next time we meet with these folks.
Right.
And, and with your permission, we'd love to be able to send you in from the DMI, what the other regulations are that mirror these and all of those conditions.
If you could do that for us, it'll help us.
Yes, please.
You know, we, we don't need to reinvent the wheel, we just want to protect the town, we want to protect the town of Pembroke and advocate for the business owner, too.
Oh, I felt that, it seemed as though we didn't have any. We do, it's just that usually they're imposed at a level that isn't the select board's love, so now you guys find yourself in that position, we can bring them forward from someone else.
Great, yeah, if you could share that, that'll be the kicking kickoff point for us to, um, actually do it, you know?
It'd be nice to...
I, I think we've all been thinking about it and so I, I think it, it won't be a heavy lift.
Right.
It would be nice to have a bank to draw from.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. And would, we would like those to be in before, do we want to end?
I was going to say, I'll have them out to you tomorrow. And if you could have a seven-day turnaround, it would be in plenty of time.
Okay.
That would let you get through town meeting and give you till the end of that week.
That would be lovely.
And if necessary, the following week.
Sure.
So that by the Monday after town meeting, we're ready to roll.
Okay.
We can distribute them back to your consideration and they'll be in materials.
Sounds good. Anything else? Do we have any liaison updates? Nothing. Do we have any community comment from the board? Do we have any community comment from our guests? Nothing, okay. Do we have a need for executive session tonight?
We do.
Oh, I'm looking for John, I'm sorry, I thought it was you. John, do you mind reading?
Yeah, why not?
Don't forget Richard the clerk.
Uh, move executive session pursuant to general law, chapter thirty A, subsection twenty-one A six, to consider the exchange, lease or value of real, real estate if the chair declares that an open meeting may have detrimental effect on negotiating position of the public body. West Dale Street Water Tank. And seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal grant in aid requirements, specifically approval, review and/or possible release of executive session meeting minutes in accordance with general law, chapter thirty A, subsection twenty-two F through G, January twenty-second, twenty twenty-five, April ninth, twenty twenty-five, twenty-five, June twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-four and March sixth, twenty twenty-four.
Second.
Move a motion to a second, all in favor?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Myself, I'm a yes. Do we have a need to return to the public session?
No, there's no, it's just an update for the board, there's no votes or action to be taken.
Okay. Thank you.
Go to town meeting Tuesday, seven o'clock.
Forty-five.
Those, those people will be there.